Marita, we're on.
Welcome back to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We just came back from closed session. This is going to be an unusual first-time Board of Supervisors meeting. I will say, this room, you see us somewhat sitting close, less than six feet from each other. This room was fully sanitized on a medical -- to medical standards. And we're going to be doing things a little bit differently today. We will learn as we go along. To all of the county staff and to the public, the Board thanks you. And we know, in this time of crisis, we have been and we will be at our best. And with that, if you can, at home or in your office, wherever, please stand. We are going to do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm almost not sure what to do at the moment. Madam Clerk, are you going to put that number on the screen?
Only when it's time for public comment, not any other time.
Okay, got it. All right, that's fine. Could you please report out on our closed session? Thank you.
Item one, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.A, conference with counsel regarding matters posing a threat to the security of public buildings, essential public services, or the public's right of access to public services or facilities. The item will be continued to later in the day during the lunch break. Item two, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Michael Scott Taylor et al. versus County of Calaveras et al., USDC for the Eastern District of California, case number 118CV00760. There was no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Cheryl Straub and Anna Lewis v. County of Calaveras et al., Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CV43036. There was no reportable action taken. Item four, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding employee organization, Calaveras County Sheriff's Management Unit. There was no reportable action taken. Item five, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 with county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding employee organization, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association. There was no reportable action taken. Item six, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 with county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding employee organization, Calaveras County Deputy Sheriff's Association. There was no reportable action taken.
The Board will be convening back in closed session on item one, either during the lunchtime or at the end of the board meeting. Normally, we go to staff announcements, and unless our CAO or our clerk have gotten any from staff, no?
I think we have staff waiting outside.
Marita.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I have one announcement. You may have heard that there were over 100 U.S. citizens that returned to Miami from Brazil on Sunday, repatriated. We also have citizens that are currently stranded in Peru and the ones that are in Lima. Some of them did return to the United States over the last several days, but there are still some that are stranded in Cusco. And we're working with the Congress of Staff and the State Department to get them released and get them back into U.S. soil.
Yeah, my friends in Peru.
You're working with Congressman on?
Yeah.
Okay, stop. I think I see our Treasurer, Barbara Sullivan.
We need you to have the microphone, please.
Coming in the back door is kind of...
It's a new day, Barbara.
Yeah, good morning, Chair and Board Supervisors. Barbara Sullivan, Treasurer, Tax Collector. I just want to give you some updates. All the Treasurer, Tax Collectors are feeling this for everybody during this time. So we're working with our association to see what we can do about penalty waivers as far as the April 10th deadline. It's not known yet. It's like every minute, we're getting new updates. So I just want to let you know something is coming down from all of us to help with that situation. I don't know what it's going to look like yet. So I just want to give you a heads up because I'm sure your constituents are asking.
Yes.
So, yeah. So we want to make sure everybody knows that we are trying, you know, to help everybody out, too. But right now, by code, R and T code, the Governor would have to change it. And I don't see that happening because they want to keep it in our hands as far as the penalty waiver part of it. So we are kind of going to tweak it to where it does fit everybody's needs.
Okay. Well, as soon as or as decisions are made, could you let Mr. Alt know or us directly? Thank you.
As soon as we have a press release. I was going to work on one anyway, just for us to say, everybody, you know, everything's still the same. But every minute is different. So I thought I'd better wait. I'm glad I waited, so. But just to give you a heads up, I will be with, you know, copying...
I'm sure you're stopped getting lots of calls every day on this. Thank you.
Kind of.
Kind of.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, we're still here. We're staffed, so, just to let you know.
Thank you. Appreciate Ms. Sullivan. Barbara, was there anybody else out in the hall?
Yes, Dr. K.
Oh, okay, thank you. Please.
Thanks, Barbara. Morning.
Good morning, Dr. K.
All right. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm Dr. Dean Colletta, and I'm the Local Health Officer for Calaveras County with a COVID-19 update for the Board and the community. In California, there's been 1,733 positive cases in total of COVID-19 infection with 27 deaths. So far, in Calaveras County, we have two positive cases reported in the Copperopolis residents that we've known about. And we expect more cases as time goes on. Beginning March 10th, Public Health conducted a detailed and sweeping case investigation around all of the contacts to these cases, including one of the cases being a student at the Copperopolis Elementary School. Over 60 people were interviewed by Public Health Disease Investigators, including students, parents, teachers, school staff, and other community contacts, looking for those with possible signs and symptoms of coronavirus infection. From these interviews, 13 contacts were identified as being symptomatic and tested for coronavirus. All 13 were negative. Strict isolation and quarantine orders for all of the confirmed suspect cases were put into place, and no new cases of COVID-19 infection have been connected to transmission in the community surrounding those two cases in Copperopolis. Testing is a big question. Testing remains limited in Calaveras County due to the lack of adequate testing capacity and scarcity of specimen collection supplies. New guidelines are being distributed to the health care providers today to test only those patients at risk for complications from coronavirus infection with positive symptoms. Health care workers and those living in congregate living situations, like nursing home patients, nursing home staff, jail residents, that kind of thing. Public Health is aware of approximately 60 people who've been tested for coronavirus in our community, and all of those tests, except the two in the Copperopolis residents, have been negative. Now, there's been some question about, you know, why don't we know more in real time about the numbers of people who are being tested, even if those are coming back negative? The Public Health Department may not know all of that information. We know about tests that are being conducted for coronavirus infection. If people are being tested through the Public Health Laboratory System, because we have to authorize that testing in advance, the commercial laboratory system can also do coronavirus testing. An example is if a doctor tests a patient and sends that specimen to a commercial lab that's outside of the public health system, we may not know that that test was even run unless the result comes back as positive, in which case the provider and the laboratory are required to report it to us at Public Health. So there is a testing that's taking place that may be happening that we don't know about. We don't know the exact numbers. But of those that we do know...
Doctor, can't we... Can't we get that information?
Well, there are ways to collect that information, Supervisor Garamendi, but it requires us to put processes in place to be able to capture it. And we've talked about some ways to do that. For example, anytime a doctor orders a coronavirus test, to report that to the Public Health Department, and we have a mechanism to do that, the problem is getting that data in real time is not as easy as it sounds. And so we're working with the local hospital, Mark Twain Medical Center, to report to us all of the tests that they're doing through their emergency department, through their hospital medical clinics, and keeping track of that on a spreadsheet. But there is testing that's taking place in the commercial laboratory system that we don't have a good handle on. And we're trying to put processes in place to collect that information, but right now we don't. And so that's one of the limitations that we have of knowing exactly how many people are being tested, even if the results are negative. When the results are positive, we have mechanisms that are very solid to get that information right away. But for the negative tests, I can say to the community that approximately 60 residents in Calaveras County that we know about through the Public Health System have been tested, all have been negative, except the two in the Copperopolis residents.
I'm sorry, I just want to remind the Board, this is not an agendized item. We're just getting an update from Dr. Colletta, so...
Well, I think the questions are pretty...
Why can't we ask questions? We're not taking any action.
I understand, but it's not on the agenda. I'd like to just have us hear from Dr. Colletta on this item.
I think we have to have some flexibility.
Part of the COC process there, Dean, will help you start picking up some of those, right? The chain of custody process from the hospital?
Well, we're working with the hospital to get a process in place, to get a better understanding of the testing that's being done through the commercial laboratory system. So that's, I think, the best way I can frame that.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Schools remain closed in Calaveras County upon the recommendation of Public Health in coordination with the school superintendents until April 6th. We have a consultation scheduled, again, with the school superintendents later today, at which time we'll discuss the timeframe of the closures and whether or not that should be extended for the time being. All nonessential businesses, mass gatherings, restaurants, bars, wineries, nightclubs, all of the businesses that you see in the community have been recommended to be closed. Essential business activities are allowed to proceed, assuming that social distancing is being taken into account among those essential services and businesses. Governor Gavin Newsom, on Thursday, March 19th, issued a shelter-in-place directive for all California residents. Public Health has been working with Mark Twain Medical Center on surge capacity to expand patient care from 25 beds to 50 beds. That's a doubling of the local hospital capacity. And increase ICU capacity in anticipation of increased hospital and critical care demand in the next two weeks. We're monitoring the current supply of medical health supplies, such as ventilators, masks, gloves, gowns, what's called personal protective equipment that health care workers use when assessing suspect coronavirus patients, and that are necessary to maintain the safety of the health care workforce. Currently, there's no effective treatment for coronavirus infection. And currently, there's no vaccine to prevent coronavirus infection. Although we only have two confirmed cases to date in Calaveras County, we expect that there are others in our community with infection that we may not know about at this time. Testing has not been as widespread and prevalent enough to gauge the true impact of coronavirus incidence in our population. Based on this, I'm recommending the following to the public. Those who develop a respiratory illness with fever should stay home if medical care is not needed. Eighty percent of those with coronavirus infection will develop mild symptoms of illness that resolve on their own without needing medical attention. Presenting for testing or for evaluation to the medical system takes time and capacity away from the care system, and personal protective equipment from the health care providers that need to be used to assess patients that may not need medical care are not available for others who may need them more. If a person does develop a febrile respiratory illness, we recommend isolating oneself from others, including the public and other family members, until the symptoms resolve. Routine over-the-counter medications for cold and flu remedies can help those with symptoms of illness, including cough and fever. There's been questions about the use of ibuprofen in coronavirus infection. There was some discussion initially that ibuprofen may be harmful if people have coronavirus infection. There's no evidence of that. And the recommendation is that ibuprofen can be used in coronavirus infection for those with fever, along with acetaminophen, which is Tylenol or other fever remedies. Staying at home, especially those who are at high risk. People at high risk for complications of coronavirus are those over the age of 65 and those with chronic medical conditions. My biggest message to the public is not to be afraid. Right now, life's been altered. Kids aren't in school. Your favorite restaurants are closed. But if we hunker down and protect those at high risk, this will pass. We have a resilient community. I've been here since 9/11. I've been here since the events of H1N1 influenza. I've been here for the Butte Fire, and I've seen this community respond miraculously to those impacts. We have a resilient community, and I expect people to continue to cooperate with the recommendations to stay home, and we'll get through this together as a community. And I'm actually encouraged by my interactions with the medical care system, by the doctors, the nurses, the health care professionals, the local hospital. Lots of people who are considered high-risk across America don't live in a community that has an acute care hospital or intensive care unit beds, and we do here in Calaveras County. And we're working with the hospital to expand their capacity to take care of patients in the event that we start to see a surge of ill people over the next few weeks. And I'm hopeful and I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to meet this challenge and get through this together as a community.
Okay, I know, I heard what counsel said, but considering a lot of us are representing our... the public as we go forward, I am going to take the risk and ask staff or ask my colleagues to still be respectful of... We are under a quasi-Brown Act. And could you just be careful on the questions that you might be asking?
Thank you.
Go on, please.
Thank you very much. I respect what the counsel has told me, but I think the FPPC, considering we are broadcasting all of this to the wide world, can take the Brown Act and deal with it as they choose. Doctor, you... I want to thank you very much for all the work that you've been doing over the last several weeks, and I'm sure you're exhausted. I'm sure your team is exhausted, and I want to thank all the county staff that's working on this. What do you need from us as a Board of Supervisors to make your job more successful specifically? How can we help?
As a government body, you have significantly helped this effort by ratifying and approving the Declaration of Local Health Emergency. That has allowed us to marshal the resources of mutual aid systems, to tap into resources for medical health supplies, to access those medical health supplies through our regional apparatus and through the Office of Emergency Services. There's the Emergency Operations Center that's been activated, and the head of the Office of Emergency Services, John Osborne, has been working very closely with us and has been fantastic in helping us get what we need so far, as far as resources and the funds that we need to conduct these efforts, which are very labor-intensive and time-consuming.
Okay, and I know you mentioned you spoke several... referenced data several times and a lack thereof. Is there anything we can do as a Board to mandate that you get all the data you possibly need?
Well, there are already laws in effect that require medical providers to report disease statistics to us that we ask for. And at this point, it's just the logistics of us coming up with the systems that we need to be able to track this data a little bit better and report that out to the community in real time. I'm not a real big advocate for just reporting raw data on a daily basis, as we might get it, because my philosophy is, in health education, we know it's important to take medical health information that at times can be complex and frame that into a message to the public. And the message is that what does this information mean, and what can people do with that information to protect their health? So what I'd like to do is to periodically issue data to the public in terms of a message and a context around which to understand that data, so that people get accurate information as timely as we can do it and as transparently as we can do it, and yet allow people to use that information to protect themselves from this illness and those at high risk. That's one of my most important messages.
Thank you very much, Doctor, and keep...
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Stopper, did you have any questions or comment? Not...
Just when I brought up the chain of custodies earlier, my experience working with chain of custodies is there's a notification center or a section on every chain of custody. And if you had the hospital add Public Health to that notification part, you'd get the time, the information at the same time. I'm not sure if the hospital's COC looks like the ones I'm used to using, but that would be suggested to be added. That's all.
Point well taken, Supervisor Stopper.
Do you have any...
And thank you for remaining vigilant for our community. I think this is a good time for us all to stand together and, you know, support our community in the best way we can, and we appreciate the time that you put in for us, Dr. Colletta.
Thank you.
Mr. Tuffinelli? Do you have anything? Mr. Mills?
Thank you. I found it rather interesting that the Governor spoke yesterday to the number of people that went to the coast, but he did not speak to the number of people who went to Big Trees Village or came up into our area. You saw the sign outside of Murphy's that says, "If you're not local, stay home." How do we get that message across to people who want to become tourists in our area and in essence move a risk into our area unknowingly?
Well, that's hard to answer. I'm not an expert in tourism or in the movement of people who have second homes, possibly, in Calaveras County. From what I've been told, there has been an influx of people who typically live outside of the community into Calaveras County because they may have second homes in certain areas of the community, Arnold, Copperopolis, Lake Tullock, those kinds of areas. So normally, the population of Calaveras County may be 46,500. You know better than I do. But that population may have, you know, for the time being, swelled to some degree. I don't have any way of measuring that, so I can't give you any more detailed information on that. Again, I would like to go back to the concept of fear. And so I want to reassure the community that we are working on this around the clock, and I would like people to, instead of fear, to channel that into concern and vigilance, to institute personal protective and stay-at-home recommendations, but not to start to point fingers at other members of our community, not to start to stigmatize others if they happen to have come to their second home outside of our community, because we're in this together.
Thank you. Dr. Colletta, I want to thank you for doing your other update last night, I'm not sure. And I think it's important, you are the face of this for Calaveras, and doing it on a more frequent basis, I think, really helps the community and helps all of us, so we appreciate that.
We can point the community towards the Calaveras County Public Health Facebook page, where I posted that video, where that video was posted by the Public Health Staff last night, which it gives a little bit more detailed information. And we'll continue to do those things, using social media, using press releases, using provider alerts to the medical community, using all of the tools of communication that we have at our disposal to continue to get information out there and update the community the best we can.
Totally agree. I think all of us do. That's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you next week, and we'll see you on video.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Is there anybody else out there? No? Okay. I'm going to move to the next item. This is where we're going to sort of be tested, on general comments.
General public comment: Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Okay, so here's where we go into our first test. If anyone has a public comment on an item not on the agenda, if you could please call the number that you see on your screen, whatever your screen looks like, we will at least try it for the next five minutes. Thank you.
So we have not received any written general public comments prior to the board meeting, just so you know.
Thank you. Okay, so...
You should also state a time, what five minutes is, because of the delay in the video. Five minutes to our viewers is not five minutes here. It's not the same end time, so maybe...
So I think I'll be gracious and do five minutes on their time and add a couple for good measure.
It's right at the top.
Oh, is that working?
9:36.
So the phone number is, if you would like to make public comment, the phone number is area code 2097546896.
Let me call in and see if it works.
No.
So just so you know what the process is and so that people will understand what the process is, when you call the phone number listed, the 7546896, your call will be answered in our office of the clerk recorder, and you will be given instructions and then transferred here to our office. We do have one call that's coming, so here we go.
Okay. And that they will be live?
They will be live.
And the rules are still three minutes?
The rules are still three minutes. People will be given a 30-second warning, that they have 30 seconds remaining to finish their comment, and then the call will be disconnected.
Okay, could you connect the call, please?
It will be coming. I cannot do that until it's transferred. We have to wait. Okay. You are live with the Board of Supervisors. If you would like to give your name, please do so, and then begin your... If you would like to give your name, please do so and then begin your comments.
Even though you're on the ground right now, I'm not going to give my name, but it's the number thirteen. I got a bit of talk here, but I hope everybody has a productive day today. I wasn't able to comment earlier during your, during your close anyway, there was a problem with the phone system, but I will, I'm going to comment very generally on some of the items, or not items, but some pertinent, pertinent items to the general public and you. It was very interesting to hear the doctors remarks. I have to agree with them. They shouldn't stigmatize people. I noticed that there was a sign up in Murphy's saying locals only, and I, you have to under, people have to understand that a lot of those people that are coming to the community own second homes, and they may rent them out, but they are their homes. That is official property, and they have a right to reside there. It has put somewhat of a stress on the local markets. Apes and milk have been in short supply, but they're getting, they're getting new, they're getting shipments soon. It is, I have to encourage you to take a, to communicate via email safely or over the phone with your constituents and remind them that this is an evolving situation, and there will be, there will be relief available through the state and federal government and probably through the county as well. And you are the, you are the representative. As the representative, you have great contact with them, and you should use that. You are leaders in the community. I'd like to thank you for your time today. It is, yeah, I know really, I'm up here doing a little bit of self-awareness, I'm not really in the community, but, but I do appreciate the work that you folks are doing. Have a wonderful day. Wave if you heard me. No wave? Okay, take care, guys. Bye-bye. Have a good...
Okay, we will have another, another call in just one moment. If you would like to give your name, please do so and then begin your comments.
Yes, it's Vicki Ranky, and my comments are about holding public meetings during this crisis with the coronavirus, and my comment is that the staff should, or the Board should only be doing essential agenda items and should not be doing agenda items that are not of essential running of our county. People, I fortunately can get online and watch this meeting, but there's many people in our county who don't have that access to the Internet the way that some do, and not being able to be there to give public comment on agenda items is very critical. Our discussions are based a lot on listening to the presentations, hearing what the Board of Supervisors have to say, and then making our comments, and that cannot happen with this system. So anyway, I wanted to make that point, and we'll see how the rest of the meeting goes. Thank you.
So there's no calls at the moment?
Well, I don't... Yeah, we will wait until...
Upper left corner.
Okay, we'll, we'll wait till nine, nine, nine fifty, and then we will close public comment.
Okay, another call is coming in. If you would like to give your name, please do so and then begin your comments.
Jeremy Maddox. I would like to, that distribution needs to be pushed further into our county so that local cultivators that are in the new program can keep distribution here and they can locally provide to local stores and dispensaries.
Jeremy?
Hello?
This is Marita.
You're going to have to just say it.
That item is going to be discussed later, unless you have something you want to say that's not scheduled on the agenda, please proceed.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding you.
So that, that item is on our agenda. It's item twenty-five.
I thought I was making a public comment.
You can make a general public comment for any item not on the agenda today.
Oh, sorry. I'll let you guys go. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Keep talking.
He could call in when it's on.
That's what she told him?
No.
She didn't tell him?
She didn't say that.
What?
So you can't... I think he's confused. Can you explain to people while we're waiting that you can call in again as we go through each agenda, and you can call in for public comment on each agenda, because I don't think that was clear.
Okay, just to let you know, on every agenda item, when it comes up, you are welcome to call in and discuss, just as if you were here in the boardroom, on any item that is up for discussion. This point, it's just for general comments on items not on the agenda.
How do we handle the concerned agenda somebody from the public, Mr. Paul?
I'll ask them, and then we're...
I'm just making sure we're getting it out of the way.
We're working.
So in, in answer to your question, Supervisor Toffenelli, on our agenda, we gave very specific written instructions that said that people could provide general public comment, and they could call in or provide email for every agenda item.
And I'm well aware of it. I read that, but I'm not sure everybody read it or understand exactly what was going on here.
We don't. That's true.
So I just want to keep repeating it so people know and understand.
Good point.
You are live with the Board of Supervisors. If you would like to give your name, please do so and then begin your comment.
Hello there, everybody. I'm not going to give my name, and I just want to give this message to that lame duck that's on there.
Who? What was that man in the chair?
Okay.
Simpson? No, it was Donald Duck. Come on, man.
I'm going to move to the consent agenda item, and just for protocol, again, like before, you'll be able to call in on any consent agenda item that you would like to have pulled and discuss. Madam Clerk, could you please read consent?
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Okay, staff has pulled item twelve for future use. If any member of the public is the...
Is that in future use?
For future, for down the road.
It's being withdrawn?
It's withdrawn. Is that the right word?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
For future use.
Sorry.
We're going to use it later.
I'd like to have a motion when we get to that.
So do we have to have a motion to pull?
When we get to, when we finish the consent agenda, yes.
But not on, if staff member pulls item twelve? We still do?
If I'm understanding correctly, if staff is just looking to continue this precise item to a future meeting, then the Board would make a motion on that, yes. And so if that is what's happening, as opposed to it actually just being removed...
Mr. Alt, did staff just want to...
It's just being moved.
Moved it down the road?
Not withdrawn.
To the next meeting.
Do we need to vote on that? Geez, Thomas.
Yes.
May I have a motion?
Wait, wait, wait.
What is the system telling us to do?
What the clerk is recommending that you do is when an item is tabled, it will need a vote. Since it's being removed from the consent agenda, then you would act on it after you have addressed the remainder of the consent agenda.
Does any member of the Board or staff wish to pull an item on consent? Does any member of the public have an item on consent that they would like to pull?
The public would like to pull item nine.
Okay.
Will you be setting a five-minute time period for people to call in?
Yeah.
So that would be at nine fifty-eight? Not yet. We're waiting for the five minutes for the public to call in, to pull items.
You must have received an invitation to get an email that's really in the folder.
Yes, this was before the four o'clock yesterday afternoon timeline.
Sue, we have a specific question.
There are two emails, yes.
Can, can, in the future, can we, while we're waiting, move on to the, and get a motion for the remainder since nobody wanted to pull anything and go through that, or do we have to wait?
We have to wait five minutes to see if anybody's going to call in to see if they want to pull anything.
Well, I understand we have to wait five minutes, but, well, yeah, I guess we have to see if anybody wants to pull any, anything else.
We need your microphone, please.
The time for pulling items on consent are closed. We will ask Rebecca Turner, the clerk, to address the question that has come up.
Could we please have an action on the rest of the consent agenda? Could we please have an action on the rest of the consent agenda?
Madam, may I move the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Yeah, motion by Supervisor Stoppa, second by Supervisor Guermin, Toffanelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board.
It's, she did it last week, too.
What? I know. Would you two change?
Item nine is from the Elections Office to adopt a resolution to declare the results of the canvas for the presidential primary election held on March 3, 2020.
And the question comment is?
So the questions, the first is from Trevor Whitkey. He says, "Hello, Board. I have requested that consent agenda item nine be pulled in order to get some clarification from Supervisor Dennis Mills regarding statements his campaign made during the integrity of the, regarding the integrity of the local election. As noted in the Calaveras Enterprise referencing a Facebook post on the Mills campaign's Facebook page, quote, "In the post, Mills stated that there were a number of reports of problems throughout the county with the elections and that he is working with officials to ensure that all legitimate votes are counted. What reported problems, if any, occurred? What officials, if any, did Supervisor Mills work with to ensure all legitimate votes were counted? What specifically did Supervisor Mills do to ensure all legitimate votes were counted? Now that the final count is in and it is clear that Amanda Follendorf has emerged victorious, will you Supervisor Mills concede?"
The sec- Oh, God, I'm sorry.
The second emailed comment is from Jennifer Smith. "Per direction of the agenda packet, I am submitting my public comment in writing to the Clerk of the Board. I would like to request that agenda item number nine be pulled from the consent agenda. I feel that our election results are too important to be included in a consent agenda. Items of concern with regarding the election and the reason that I request this is that, one, sitting Supervisor and candidate Dennis Mills claimed that there were quote-unquote 'problems' with the elections and that he worked with quote-unquote 'officials' regarding these problems. I think that our citizens deserve a clear explanation of this claim. Two, there have been accusations of ballot harvesting. Has this issue been investigated? I appreciate your consideration."
Okay, thank you. Mr. Turner, you were just to address what the process was for the election system? And I understand the other comments, but you, the issue before us is to declare the results of the canvas. If there were any problems that you encountered, if you could address them, fine. Otherwise, please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning. Rebecca Turner, County Elections Official. I brought the canvas before you because we did not foresee any issues. We did do a manual tally to ensure that the votes were calculated correctly, and they were. We canvassed back through everything that happened at vote centers, the ballots we issued and returned, and there were no foreseeable problems or any reason to believe that the election tally as presented is not correct.
Did you run into any issues or concerns during this new time of voting, the new system?
Overall, everything went very smooth. We actually had our highest turnout in over 12 years for a primary election. I would say we went through a change in our election procedure, but we didn't, from that change, see any significant impact to the votes.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the Board? Okay, I will entertain a motion on item nine.
We have to ask for public comment and allow a five-minute time period?
That's right, thank you. Part of my learning curve.
So until 10:07?
Until 10:07, we will allow for public comment.
You are live with the Board of Supervisors. Please, if you would like to give your name, please do so and then begin your comments. Or if you're pulling an item, please tell us which item. This item, I'm sorry.
Good morning. This is Beth Whitkey, and I just have a procedural question about certifying an election. I'm wondering if a candidate, I'm wondering about recusal, given that Supervisor Mills brought up all these questions with the election. My concern is that there may be some bias going in, and so I really would like it if he answered some of the questions that were posed in written public comment. And I'm just curious to see if there will be any recusals. Thank you.
Oh, hold on, please. You are live with the Board of Supervisors. If you would like to give your name, please do so and then begin your comment.
Good morning. I'd like to see the Board address the concerns of the two written comments that were submitted before the deadline. I think it's sad, save affairs that you guys aren't addressing that. Bye.
Public comment's closed.
Okay, public comment period is closed. I will address some of that. The, what is before the Board is to adopt a resolution declaring the results of the canvas for the presidential election that was held March 3, 2020. Excuse me, the presidential primary election. Mr. Mills does not have to answer any of those questions. The Board is not in the position of answering those questions. If Supervisor Mills wishes to recuse himself, he can do that. That is at his discretion. Having been in this position before, five years ago, I was on the Board when I voted to approve the canvas, which also said that I lost. Was it painful? Absolutely. But that was my choice, and in this case, it's also Mr. Mills' choice. So if there's no comments from the Board, I could have a motion, please. So the motion dies for a last-
I'll move this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Toffanelli. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Supervisor Mills seconds this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board.
Item 12 is from Public Works to direct the purchasing agent to issue a blanket purchase order to Brandon Tire in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for a period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
May I have a motion? I don't, for, but he's just, he's pulling it to move it forward.
No, he wanted to speak to it. He wanted to speak to it.
Staff and the admin office has requested that this be moved to the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
Madam-
Then we have to allow for public comment.
Is this item called, correct?
Yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Bonny Rich Administration. I had an opportunity to discuss this item with the Director of Public Works, and there was a breakdown in communication. We also have the Sheriff's Office that has a need. They purchase similar tires from the same vendor. So out of consideration for making sure the Department of Public Works continues to get what they need, I'm going to ask that this Board go ahead and approve this item, but just know that I'm going to be coming back with a second item for the Sheriff's Office. Does that make sense?
Yes. What you're asking is that we approve the item, but you're going to come back with the same one instead of commingling them at another time.
Correct. There is an overall county-wide need. It's not just limited to Public Works and IWM. So let's let them continue to do business, and I'll come back with the second item for the Sheriff's Office.
Any questions from the Board?
Let's be clear, we're not commingling anything.
We're six feet.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry. Okay. Were there any public comments on this item? All public comment open until 10:15. Thank you. Oh, no, just wait, just in case. Thank you.
My tires can't go on the truck because I would just-
It's sand. Whatever the two shall be.
I'm just sort of trying to, do a little bit of a keel. Just stash them.
R16s or 17s?
No, that's a snow.
15s, 16s, 17s.
On different cars. Because otherwise that would be really weird.
Depends on the circumference of the tire outside the road.
I'm not a mother, but I guess I got enough tires.
Yeah.
I don't know. I thought, I told Klay we didn't, in a new car, we needed snow tires, and then it started snowing. Then it started snowing, but then it was getting s-.
Do you want to give my snow tires, just change them?
I just, no.
Just get the rest is-
I just get good tires. It's a skinny rims, just really.
The spinners?
Oh, yeah. Those are my ranch trucks.
Good.
I like things like that.
Jack, your microphone is on.
Pardon?
Your microphone is on?
That'd be interesting.
Who's testing on your man?
Spare the rash truck.
Suzanne, do you want to get some of that?
Tiny. Should have some of these in front of us because they have to be small, tiny inch rims, and they're coming out. Tiny enough.
Okay. The opportunity for public comment of both the other way.
Leave it out. Thank you. Opportunity for a public comment is closed on this item. May I have a motion?
I'll move this item, Madam Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Toffanelli, second by Supervisor Stoppa. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Suzanne, could you please remove the call and, thank you.
We're going to be moving to the regular agenda item. I'd like to take a three-minute break, please. I'd like to reconvene the meeting and we will be moving into regular agenda. Madam Clerk, could you do item 19, please?
Item 19 is from the Administrative Office pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 13869.7B, the board may choose to provide comments regarding Murphy's Fire Protection District's proposed ordinance, which would become part of the district's public hearing record.
Thank you. We have before us the proposed ordinance for Murphy's Fire Protection District and with us to maybe answer any questions is the fire chief, is, I was thinking of your dad, just when, I'm sorry, Chief Wilks, Brian Wilks, and our fire marshal from Bryan Vane, Ryan Vane is here to answer any questions. They are part of our ELC group and thank you. So all of you have had the opportunity to read the district's proposed ordinance. Chief, is there anything you wanted to say on behalf of the fire districts and, or maybe I should put our county council up there since she's been intimately involved in this.
Yeah, so this has been a long process for us. We've been working on this for several years now. I've been the chief for three years now and it's been on my, on my plate since day one, basically, to get this moved through. So a lot of back and forth. We were very close to getting this in front of you last year and then we came to the point where the fire code was going to be updated again, so we paused and brought it into this year so we can update the most current, or include the most current fire code in this. So that's why we've had a few delays, a lot of back and forth with Sarah, which I really got to appreciate all of your help. This is, this is a lot of work and Ryan, who pretty much wrote this thing. So it's for the betterment of the community, that's why we're pushing this through and to give us some assistance in taking care of some of the fire threat that we have in our area, so that's why we're here.
Well, I know on behalf of my constituents that serve, that you serve, and I know you do Supervisor Mills, they are really looking forward to having this ordinance in place. Supervisor Mills, did you have any comments or questions you'd like to make to the chief?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair. The concern would be is are we coordinating well with the other fire districts? I'm thinking consolidated and whether or not they might be able to implement a similar plan and how quickly that, that's up to them to do, but that, that level of coordination through the JPA, I think, will be critical to the success of it as it moves through the rest of the districts in the county. Have you, have you worked on that with them?
Honestly, no. A lot of our work on this was directed with Evans Pass Fire District because they have a ordinance that's in place that's very similar to this. We mirrored a lot of the stuff that they're doing already and have been for several, several years. I know Calco Central are kind of doing their, their own thing as well and I think one of the things with ours that we're not implementing is any exaction fees or anything like that are not included in this. Everything that's included in this is only fees for service and fees that we would recoup from services that we provided. So I think some of the other agencies who are having to get NEXA studies done and things like that to include in that, which, which is a part of ours, so.
Yes, Supervisor.
Thank you very much. I'm not exactly clear why we're, what, what our role is in this. You guys are an independent board. What you do doesn't impact my fire districts except as friends and figuring out how to work together, so what are we doing here?
Well, the Health and Safety Code requires that the fire district that's within a county that we present it to the county for comment.
Okay.
That's, it's part of the Health and Safety Code, Section 13869.7B.
So we could give you our comments, but we have no authority over this. This is your game.
Right now, no. Later on, when we take it to our board, it's all part of the public comment portion of this, which is included today. It's my understanding, Sarah can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we take it back to our board for approval, it comes back to you for final approval and then.
It does. The fire district law, which is in the Health and Safety Code dictates, just as Chief said, that, so this stage of the game, the board can provide any comments it wishes to the district, then the district board, that would become part of their hearing record. They adopt their ordinance and then it comes back to the Board of Supervisors for ratification.
But if we approve it, I mean, that's not, you know, I'm not going to have, I haven't talked to my chiefs about this.
Well, today is.
I want to make sure we're putting stuff on.
Right, so today is not any sort of approval. This is the board's opportunity to provide any comments that it may have. The district then takes those into consideration, those become part of their hearing record. You're correct, the district board adopts the ordinance and then it will come back to this board for ratification.
And Mr. Germain, I think I may have heard that you were concerned about your constituents in your districts. This would have nothing to do with anybody other than the Murphy's Fire Protection District and our, and our district itself.
I mean, I don't, I don't have any objection to it. I just, you would want your supervisor checking off of you as well.
Absolutely. I agree.
Okay, if there's no other comments from the board at this time, I'd like to open it for public comment and we will go to 10:30.
Don't pull public back there.
Close public comment time at the moment. Supervisor Mills?
Yes, one more question for the chief. What point do you think that you'll be able to have this implemented? Is this something that you think your board can get through and, and have it in place by this summer and begin to start doing a lot of this?
I think that's the plan. There's some time constraints that we have based on the, the public access code, or law, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it. I'm looking at Sarah for some help here. But we, we do have some time periods that we have to adhere by, public comment periods and other things that need to be done.
Just as with adoption of any ordinance, those provisions of the government code apply, but those don't change, but I presume the district will be moving quickly to get.
Just, just looking for timelines as well.
Yeah, I'd love to have it in by summer. With the meeting rules and things that are going on right now, I'm not sure, we're probably going to have to play the same game that we're doing here today with the phone and everything else and just let everybody be involved in it, but we just want to get it done as soon as we can, for sure.
Congratulations for doing this much work.
Thank you. I hand it to my fire marshal here for all the back and forths here, so, thank you.
Supervisor Tuffinelli.
I do have a couple questions. I didn't hear anything from either one of my fire chiefs in my district and I'm assuming that you guys are part of the JPA that was formed.
Sure.
Did you circulate this, that the JPA and, and for their comments though?
Honestly, no. Each district, I, at least my understanding, has been kind of working on their own stuff for several years now. My fire marshal was able to finally sit down, hunker down with myself and just get ours to a point, now that we're, we're progressing at a rapid pace, to get it done as fast as we can. Couple of fire seasons ago, it really lit a fire under us, excuse the pun, but to really start thinking about getting this done as soon as possible so we could get these implemented. So, yeah, at the JPL level, we do discuss and even at the fire chief's level, discuss, you know, what other districts are doing, but not in depth that this was passed around in any of the other agencies. So, but anybody asks for it, we obviously will provide it to them, for sure. Thank you.
Supervisor Stopper?
Reading through this, I mean, there, there's a couple of small things I, I just think that, you know, to bring to light, 503.2.3, suburban rural water supply storage. Swimming pools and ponds shall not be considered water storage for the purposes of firefighting. Now, I understand each fire district has its own in respect and, you know, different areas have different applications when they go in, but for example, Toyon Middle School has its own wastewater facility because it's out, outside any region of services provided. That wastewater facility goes into a pond and that pond charges a fire system for that school. And I think something like this could limit you in the future because, look, you're Murphy's Fire District, but you don't just cover Murphy's. You, you, you cover a broad area throughout, throughout the area. And when, in the future, with certain development coming in, you may want to reconsider that because certain type of development doesn't necessarily have the services or facilities to be able to apply it the way downtown Murphy's does. So, you know, maybe give an acre footage of a pond, per se, and what type of system comes off of that, but I think limiting yourself on something that, on storage like that, could be rethought. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Did you want to make any comments on that?
Well, I gotta refer the, that kind of stuff to my fire marshal who's the expert in fire code and, and why that stuff's written in the code.
So the reason that we put that in there is more or less for reliability. As you're building a, a new building, coming out there and saying, hey, we've got this, you know, swimming pool that we want to use as, as our water storage and that's, it presents a lot of issues. It presents issues with access, fire equipment access and also reliability. Hey, we drained our pool this week, so sorry, we don't have any firefighting resources available for you. So basically what I'm, what I'm after is, is water tank storage, you know, something like a, a private hydrant system that's run off of wastewater, I, you know, we'll look at that on an individual basis, but, you know, basically it's for reliability of the, of the water sources. Yeah, absolutely. That, that makes complete sense. I understand that, like the Toyon, for example, during the summer when school's out, they're required to keep it full, they have to use their wells to keep it so full for that very reason. So. And I wanted to circle back to the, the county as a whole, all of the districts. When I did write this, I did look at other, like Chief said, Evans Pass Fire District ordinance and also Calco, very, very similar ordinances. And if we were to do a JPA with, where everybody jumped on board with an ordinance like this, it's going to be pretty easy. And there, there's nothing out here that's really outlandish, you know, that's, you know, hey, this is going to be Murphy's specific. It's going to be more or less, you know, hey, these are, these are our fees because these are the salaries that we pay and what we're trying to recoup, you know, for things such as plan reviews or, or inspection fees or something like that. So on, on a whole, I mean, like I said, it's, that's about the only thing that, that's really going to be specific to Murphy's Fire.
Okay, anything else? I'll, Diane, was there anybody waiting in the wings?
You haven't opened public comment yet.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, yeah, you did. No, there wasn't, I'm sorry.
I'd like a motion for this with designating no written comment.
I'll move the item, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0. Thank you very much, chief. Thank you, Mr. Vane. Like to move to item 20.
Item 20 is from Human Resources to adopt a resolution authorizing revisions to the job description for road maintenance worker 1, 2, 3, and also the job description and classification title for Public Works Inspector 1, 2, effective at board adoption.
Are there any questions, comments from the board? Like to open to public comment. Public comment will go to 10:40. As I'm in, I opened it up for public comment, for any public comment who wish to, to call in.
Okay.
Fine. Is there anything that, to me, it was very self-explanatory, so is there anything you'd like to add outside of what was in the staff report?
No, I think it was very self-explanatory. They were, the purpose of the changes to the two job descriptions, the Public Works Inspector was to create a 1, 2 series, the one being an entry-level trainee so that employees could be trained up, and then the road maintenance worker, three, changing the, the commercial CDL as recommended and not mandatory.
Okay. Any comments to Judy?
Judy, SEI, you good with all this?
Yes.
We've confirmed.
Yes, we have met and confirmed. I have the email that they approve of the changes.
Thank you.
We didn't meet in person, it was done through emails.
It's a new world.
Just wait until we get any, so I'm holding public comment open until 10:42.
Okay, thank you. All right, there being no public comment, I'd like to bring this item back to the board for a motion. Is there one, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Toffinelli. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you, appreciate that. Is, could you see if Nancy's in the back? She can come in.
She's in the front, trying to get in.
She's going around, she's going around.
So, item 21 is from the library to authorize the Calaveras County Librarian to accept a grant from the California State Library in the amount of $248,969 for engaging families through the library's Shared Vision Project.
Thank you.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, Nancy.
Thank you. The clerk's already read the item, would you like to discuss it?
Thank you, Board. Nancy Giddens, County Librarian, thank you very much for continuing with the business, allowing us to move forward with the things that we have planned for our departments. I'm very happy to bring you good news today that our library system has been awarded by the State Library, a grant in, at the sum of $248,969, which I know is small potatoes for some departments, but it's huge for us. I'd also like to just say thank you for your support of the library because, because you have supported our efforts over the almost four years now that I've been here. We have been able to improve and expand our services to children and families. Because of that, our library system amongst all the library systems in the state was one of very few who is deemed to have a high readiness factor. So, we were able, I was able actually to apply for this grant January 18th. The grant does not officially open until April 8th. So, we actually received the funding for this grant long before other libraries had even submitted their plans. So, it was because you've supported us and allowed us to move ahead, we have ongoing program that we'll now add to and expand further. So, thank you very much for your support. We have designed a program called Engaging Families Through the Library in Calaveras County. What we will, this grant has three basic components, one, a staffing component of two limited-term, limited hours also, obviously, employees who will assist with the planning, purchasing, and implementation of this grant, about $45,000 for materials that we will purchase and support materials for the program, and then, the last piece, the biggest piece, is we will receive $120,000 for, to go toward the purchase of a bookmobile. This is very exciting for me because we have several areas in our county that we have not been able to deliver services to. I mean, yes, we have eight branches, which is very, very good for a county this size, but there are some areas that have expressed to me, we want a branch. District 5, down Highway 26 is one of those. Mountain Ranch is another community that at one time did have a branch library, and they're saying, when will we get it again? And I think we all know that brick and mortar sites are probably not in our future for more sites for this county, but a mobile unit will allow us to deliver services to these communities that we would not be able to deliver. I'm very happy that if this is, if you approve this today and we can move ahead with this purchase, we'll be able to deliver service to Railroad Flat. Their school is being closed next year, I think to be able to take resources and materials and programming through our bookmobile to that community would really be an uplifting thing for them. I would love to see how we can reach better our native community in West Point. I think that a vehicle like this would help with that outreach. There, I'm sure you're all thinking of, yes, what about my, what about mine, and we're open to all suggestions of where we might go. I'm very pleased to be able to put into our planning now some morning hours for Valley Springs and West Point, two communities where we only have afternoon hours because we're, our site is at a school. So, I'm not talking about going down there every morning or anything, but we could offer a morning a week to those communities, which I think would be really, really a help. There is a component in the grant for a 20% match. The Friends of the Library will help with this. They have guaranteed that $50,000, but they will be reaching out to other communities to donate toward particularly the bookmobile to community groups which will benefit greatly from this enhanced and enlarged service. So, I ask you today to receive this grant, allow me to receive it, so that we can begin the process of enlarging our programming, purchasing the items that we need, and also planning the specifics and the specs of our bookmobile. The State Library has added to this grant about $7,500 that is on them to employ a consultant who has vast experience in constructing and designing bookmobiles, and we will be able to use him in both the planning of what we will have and writing the RFP for this purchase. So, that's a very great boon for us. You may think bookmobiles help passe, but actually, there is such a high demand right now for this because many library systems are realizing, like we are, that it's a very, very good way to deliver services to underserved areas. So, there may be, we're getting a jump start on this for the California libraries because we got this early grant approval, but we're looking at at least a nine-month wait after we order our vehicle, so I really will be excited to get going on this as quickly as we can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any comments or questions, Mr. Stopper?
Thank you for moving forward on this, Nancy. It's fabulous that we're moving towards families and younger children and getting more engaged with them right now. You know, as we know, it's a different generation, a lot of them are on their devices and stuff, and getting them engaged in a community program like this, stimulating their intellect and thoughts through reading and taking it to them is, you know, it's thinking outside the box, it's not what the, you know, old style of library was, but, you know, today's a new age, and this is a great way to do it. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Nancy, for going after this. Sometimes you have to be aggressive to get in front of.
My motto is, if you don't ask, the answer is always no.
Of course, and then it still might be no. As we look to our economy right now and potentially a budget reset, what do you see as potential future obligations in years two through five? Because once, once we get this in place, we're going to want to keep it going and keep it moving forward, and there's going to have to be some give and take in the budget process as to how to make that work for you in those odd years. Have you thought about that?
Yes, I have. There will be increased cost for fuel and maintenance. There's nothing I can do to allay that. However, even, we're getting some extra hours from staff with these limited-term employees for two years, but even after that, we believe that we can service many of the areas that we want to service with existing staff. We will also reconfigure hours, maybe not be open as long in some areas as we are presently, and use those staff hours to deliver services mobily. So, that's my long-term plan. Hopefully, we will have recovered and be in a good position to, to even expand this service, but if we can't, I believe that we can still carry it on with staff that we have. Thank you.
Mr. Guerra Mandy.
I just want to add to the chorus of thank you, Nancy, for going out and getting this, these mobile book fans. It's, as Vince pointed out, it's a different world, but this is how we can provide services, especially as we face uncertain future. Sure, there's a lot of moms and dads that would love to have that mobile book fan available right now, out at home, but I just really want to thank you and keep going. I think that the libraries are an important part of restoring normalcy when we're through this, and they are not the libraries we all grew up in. Their library is loud and things going on and people learning, it's a very exciting place, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to, there's no comments at this time, I'd like to open it for public comment on this item. The phone number is up on the screen, and it'll be open for public comment till 10:57. I am on.
You are now.
God dang.
I turned you on.
Yeah, thank you.
Let the record show there were no public comments on this item. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor.
I'll second it.
Second.
Toffinelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0. Thank you, Nancy, you can bring us money anytime.
Oh, thank you. And may I just invite you all to go onto calaveraslibrary.com, and you'll see the services that even though we are discretionary, not essential services, we have, we're doing all that we can to give services to the community, so please look at that. We are, we have lots of things in place, I won't talk to you about it, but, Mr. Stopper, what you said, a lot of our vendors are giving our patrons free our patrons free online services during this time. So library community really pulls together and steps up. So do go online. We have all kinds of eBooks, videos, great courses if you want to learn to cook Mediterranean or something.
So we can get books online?
You can get books online. You can get all kinds of online resources, so please look at our website.
Nancy, thank, thank you very much. Keep up the good work for the community. We appreciate it.
Like to move to item 22. Madam Clerk?
Item 22 is from the Administrative Office to approve Administrative Policy Number 001-2020, the Grant Policy.
Okay. Mr. Alk, did you want to take this?
Krista. Krista did mention that she wanted to speak to it. She was going to come in and introduce the item. I'm sure she's, and there she is.
She had a long commute.
That minute and a half delay that we have.
So, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Krista Van Mada, Deputy CAO, here to bring back the grant item. And at this point, I'd just like to open it for questions. I know we won over it relatively well the last time we were here. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take them now.
Are there any questions or were, the board did have some questions that concerned at our last meeting?
I'm, I'm just going to make it public that originally when this was heard during the meeting, I was absent. I did view the entire thing from that meeting and then I reviewed it once again prior, prior to today. So I'm familiar with everything that was said during that meeting.
Are there any questions at this time? I will open it to public comment if anyone would like to call in. The number is on the screen. And we will go for, till 11:06.
Thank you, Supervisor Gueramendi.
No, we have to exercise.
Where you want. You can go back to your office and come back and.
No, I want to move item 25 this afternoon.
It's in the world. My grandma.
Yeah. He said, Ethan said his presentation is about an hour or so and we're going to go back into closed session. We're going to launch a closed session and then send back.
You're going to go after lines.
Yeah. What did I say? Yeah. I don't want to be the conduit.
We have to be.
Yeah, I didn't catch it.
Got it. I'll have to get on my personal iPad. Because she's like someone.
Do you want to do 24, 25?
Sorry, I didn't hear what it was.
23 and 24 together. So we don't have to do this way, comments once.
Sure. And what we're going to do is I'm going to move 25 to this afternoon, to one o'clock because we're going to eat lunch in our closed session.
Okay. But I think we could do those two.
Got it, got it, got it.
Can we do that, Counselor?
Got it.
Okay, just checking.
Anyway, we'll call the governor and. Seeing that there was no public comment on this item, I'm going to bring it back to the board. I am going to be supporting this item. I think we're very cumbersome in our approach and we have a lot of staff time and paper time that goes through the process. And I really appreciate trying to make it more efficient for, for everyone concerned. Is there any further comment on this item? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Mills, second.
Second.
By Supervisor Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As long as we're always being a little bit different, right now I'm going to take item 23 and 24 since they are closely aligned. And when I open public comment, you can comment on item 23 and 20, on either 23 and 24. Madam Clerk?
Item 23 is from Economic and Community Development to make a finding of public benefit and to approve and authorize the Board Chair to execute the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance lease for a five-year term ending June 30th, 2025, with an annual lease amount of $1. Item 24 is also from Economic and Community Development to make a finding of public benefit and approve and authorize the Board Chair to execute the Mountain Ranch Community Club lease for a five-year term ending June 30th, 2025, with an annual lease amount of $1.
Yes.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and Honorable Board Supervisors. Kathy Galino from Calaveras Economic and Community Development, bringing before you two lease agreements, one for the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance and one for the Mountain Ranch Community Club, to continue services, providing community services, a park, a resource center for our communities in Mountain Ranch and around the county.
Okay.
Any questions?
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Gueramendi?
I'd like to, Kathy, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you've put in on these. I know you've put in innumerable hours over the last six months, really trying to move these forward and getting them cleaned up. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, and the other, I'm going to.
We have public comment.
Oh, thank you.
We do.
Oh.
So we've received two email comments. The first is from Allison Charter Smith. On behalf of the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance Board, our volunteers and our food pantry clients, we wish to thank the Board of Supervisors, Catherine Galino, and other county departments who have assisted in the creation of this partnership with our organization for the benefit of the community of Mountain Ranch. During these challenging times, we are grateful to be able to assist our community members who are most in need with the maintenance of the Mountain Ranch Food Pantry Food Distribution Program with allowance for curbside pickup. We look forward to the distant future in again serving our community with our children's programs, Lunch With Us Community Food Program, and our other community events. Second email is received from Anita McGee Hunt. My name is Anita McGee Hunt and I am the President of the Mountain Ranch Community Club. We wish to thank Catherine Galino and Jack Gueramendi for the assistance provided us in the contractual arrangements involved for the park lease. We are pleased to work with the county in keeping this vital part of our community operational and safe for all of us. We are particular, we particularly are pleased that the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance has been tasked with helping us pay for the well which provides all of each entity's water, which the club owns, until such time as the new well is drilled at the park by the county to serve their needs.
Again, the phone number, if you'd like to call in on this item, is on the screen and we will open public comment till 11:15. Just for information, on item 25, we will be taking that item up this afternoon starting at one o'clock.
Sometimes.
Okay, I'm closing public comment on item 23, 24. I will take these as separate votes. And Mr. Gueramendi, did you want to make the motion?
Madam Chair, I'd love to make a motion.
Microphone on.
You want to do separate votes or one motion?
Separate vote, we'll do separate.
Make a motion to accept item number 23?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Gueramendi, second by Supervisor Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Item 24.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept item 24?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Gueramendi, second by Supervisor Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Again, item 25, we will take that up at one o'clock. We will be adjourning back into closed session. Thank you.
Thank you for the work on this, Kathy.